All members will report to the floor of the House. We're about to have the morning roll call. We are about to have the morning roll call. All members present will please vote green to signify their presence in the chamber, and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machines. Doorkeepers will please close the doors and keep them closed. Good morning. Day two of the special session is here. And we will begin our day with scripture reading and prayer by the chaplain, after which we will pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. I have the great honor of introducing the chaplain today. And for those of you who have not heard, a message from Representative Mac Jackson, you are in for a real treat. And I am just delighted that he has agreed to be our chaplain today. Representative Jackson is from Sandersville in Washington County. He attended Albany State College for two years and graduated from Georgia College and State University with a degree in political science. He was employed by the state of Georgia for thirty-four years. He retired in March of 2006 from the Department of Corrections as a probation officer and is today the part owner of Benchmark Partners LLC in Sandersville. He also is the pastor of the St. James Christian Fellowship. He was elected to this house in November of 2008. You won't find many people who will ever utter anything other than the highest tribute to Mac Jackson because of the life that he lives. And I am honored to call him my friend, and I am looking forward to his message this morning because he is a great man of God. It's my honor now to introduce to you Representative Mac Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to every one of you here in the House of Representatives. You know, it's always an honor to stand up here and to be able to speak to such a distinguished group of honorable men and women, such as yourselves here in the Georgia General Assembly. I heard a story a couple of days ago about a preacher who went for a walk in a wooded area one day. And as he was walking, he came upon a bear. And when he saw the bear, he started running. And as he was running, he said a prayer. And he said, "Lord, turn this bear into a Christian." And as soon as he said that, the bear fell on its knees and started praying. So the preacher figured that he'd walk up and hear the prayer from the bear. And when he walked up to the bear, he heard him say, "Lord, bless this food that I'm about to receive." Don't ever trust a bear. There's a song that says, "In times like these, you need a Savior. In times like these, you need an anchor. So be very sure, be very sure. Your anchor holds and grips the solid rock. This rock is Jesus. He's the only one." And Isaiah, I took a scripture out of the book of Isaiah, and the prophet Isaiah said in chapter forty, verse twenty-seven. He said, "Why saith thou, O Jacob, and speak, O Israel? My way is heeded from the Lord, and my judgment is passed over from my God. Hast thou not known, hast thou not heard, that the everlasting God, the Lord, the Creator of the ends of the earth, faints not, neither is weary? There is no searching of his understanding. He gives power to the faint, and to them that have no might, he increases strength. Even the youth shall faint and be weary, and the young men shall utterly fall; but they that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength. They shall mount up with wings as eagles; they shall run and not be weary; they shall walk and not faint." And I thought that was significant for the day, that I encourage you in God. Because when we learn to wait on the Lord, he'll do exactly what he says he will do. And I want to encourage you with a Father scripture that says in Psalm, chapter thirty. The Psalm said, "Weeping may endure for a night, but joy comes in the morning." God bless you, and God bless this great state of Georgia. Shall we pray? God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, you have brought us to this present time, and you said you would never leave us nor forsake us. So we look into the hills from which coming our help. All our help comes from the Lord. So teach us to number our days so that we may apply our hearts to wisdom. Lead and guide us as we attend to the business of this great state of Georgia. Comfort Chairman Meadows family with your love and your peace. Bless the speaker and everyone under the sound of my voice, for it's in Jesus' name that we pray, amen. Would you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Doorkeepers will unlock the doors. Chair recognizes Chairman Darlene Taylor, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits.
Mr. Speaker, your committee on information and audits has read the proceedings of the previous legislative day and found them to be correct.
Chairman Taylor, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits, reports that the Journal of the Previous Legislative Day has been read and found to be correct. Is there any objection to the confirmation of the Journal? The Chair hears none, and the Journal is confirmed. The clerk will read the resolution establishing the order of business for the day.
Mr. Burns, hundred fifty-nine, this is finally to be established for the order of business, the first part of the period unanimous consents. Second reading of bills and resolutions, morning orders.
Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolution establishing the order of business for the day? The Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. First reading of bills and resolutions, the clerk will read. There are no first readers today. Second reading of bills and resolutions, the clerk will read.
House Bill One EX by Representative Rawson, the Seventh Jones, the Forty-seventh Burns, the Hundred Fifty-ninth, and England, the Hundred Sixteenth. Bill being titled an act to amend the act making providing appropriations for the state fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. House Bill Two X by Representative Rawson, the Seventh, Jones, the Forty-seventh, Burns, the Hundred Fifty-ninth, England, the Hundred Sixteenth. Bill being titled an act to amend the act making providing appropriations for state fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. House Bill Three EX by Representative Rhodes, the Hundred Twenty, Rogers, the Tenth, Hefstration, the Hundred Fourth, Powell, the Hundred Seventy-Fourth, and Rathensberger, the Fiftieth. Bill being titled an act to amend Chapter Eight of Title Forty-eight, Official Code of Georgia Annointed Relating the Sales and Use Taxes. House Bill Four EX by Representative Powell, the Hundred Seventy-First. Bill being titled an act to amend Article Two, Chapter Seven, and Title Forty-eight, Official Code of Georgia Annointed Relating the Imposition Rate, Computation, and Exemptions from Income Taxes. House Bill Five EX by Representative Powell, the Hundred Seventy-First. Bill being titled an act to amend Chapter Eight of Title Forty-eight, Official Code of Georgia Annointed Relating the Sales and Use Taxes. House Resolution Two EX by Representative Burns, the Hundred Fifty-ninth, Jones, the Forty-seventh, and Nix, the Forty-ninth. Resolution Amending the Rules of the House of Representatives and for other purposes. That completes second reading.
I am advised that there are no reports of standing committees. No reports of standing committees. We're going on now to morning orders. Going on to morning orders. Yesterday, we had planned to have a morning order devoted to former Chief Justice Harris Hines. And then when we got the news early yesterday morning about Chairman Meadows, I asked Chairman Welch and those that were involved in that tribute to hold that over for today. Because of that, and because the others who had signed up for morning orders did not make the one hour before convening rule, the Chair is going to carry over the morning orders that were signed up for today until tomorrow. So the only morning order will be that honoring the life of Chief Justice Hines. What purpose does the minority leader rise?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Mr. Speaker, if I signed up and other members have signed up today, is it the Chair's intention that we have to sign up again for a morning order in the morning?
No. Now, if you signed up for today, then you will be deemed to have met the one hour rule for tomorrow.
Further parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Will the speakers that signed up today be limited by the time limit that would apply for a morning order for one day? Will we have the benefit of two days' worth of time for morning orders?
Well, that depends on how late everybody wants to be here tomorrow. I think the rule is pretty, the rule addresses the time limit for morning orders. I'm happy sometime between now and tomorrow, I'll talk about that offline with the minority leader. Is that adequate? Okay. All right. All right, we're going to pause on the Hines morning order and resolution momentarily. Chair recognizes Representative Mosby to introduce the Doctor of the Day, Representative Howard Mosby.
Good morning. Let's do it again. Good morning. All right. All right, I'm here to present today our Doctor of the Day. Our Doctor today is Dr. Andrea Hulial. She's a practicing medicine doctor in Tucker, Georgia, from Tucker, Georgia, who served her community over seventeen years. She currently works for the Emory Specialty Associates with Emory Decatur Hospital. That's a, now, Emory took over the DeKalb Medical System, so I, you know, it is now the Emory-Decatur Hospital system. So that's great for us in DeKalb County. I'm just, had to put that out there, all right. She grew up in DeKalb County, attending public schools, obtained her bachelor's degree from Emory University. Her medical degree from Medical College of Georgia in nineteen ninety-eight. She completed her family medicine residency training at Atlanta Medical Center in two thousand and one. She currently is a member of the American Academy of Family Practice, the Georgia Academy of Family Medicine, the American Medical Association. She's been actively involved in the DeKalb Medical Society, having served as president and currently serves as a delegate to the Medical Association of Georgia, and serves as a director on its board. She served for several years as vice chair and chair for the Family Medicine Department on the executive medical staff of DeKalb Medical Center, now Emory Decatur. Dr. Hulial is married to Moses Hulial, has three children, Anna, three children, Anna who attends the University of Georgia, Audrey who attends the University of North Georgia, and Jacob, who's a sophomore at Lakeside High School. She's an active member of her church, Bridge Point Church in Decatur, serving as a deacon and engaged in local missions. Ladies and gentlemen, give her a hand, our Doctor of the Day, Dr. Andrea Hulial.
Well, thank you. Good morning, good morning. Again, my name is Dr. Andrea Hulial, and it is my honor to come down to the state capital today and serve as your Doctor of the Day. I was born and raised in this wonderful state of Georgia, and I truly love Georgia. As a family medicine doctor who serves the health care needs of her community, I recognize the value of service and sacrifice. And I want to thank you, the legislators, for your hard work and commitment to serve the people of Georgia. We, the physicians of Georgia, care about our patients and appreciate the efforts of this legislative body. They're focused on ensuring we have a strong health care system for all in Georgia. Again, thank you for allowing me to serve today, and blessings to you all.
The clerk will read a resolution.
House Resolution Four EX by Representative Rawson, the Seventh, Welch, the Hundred and Tenth, Rees, the Thirty-fourth, Jones, the Forty-seventh, Trammell, the Hundred Thirty-second, and others. A resolution honoring and remembering the life of the honorable P. Harris Hines, former Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of Georgia and for other purposes. Whereas it is with a heavy heart that the state of Georgia pays its final respects to the honorable P. Harris Hines, a great legal mind and devoted public servant who dedicated more than four decades of his life to justice while serving on the bench. And whereas Chief Justice Hines began his illustrious legal career in nineteen seventy-four when Governor Jimmy Carter appointed him to serve on the state court of Cobb County, in succeeding decades, he served on the Cobb Superior Court, and in nineteen ninety-five was appointed by Governor Zellmiller to the Supreme Court of Georgia, where he became Chief Justice in two thousand sixteen. And whereas during his tenure on this Georgia Supreme Court, Chief Justice Hines earned a well-deserved reputation for his brilliant mind and astute legal acumen, while presiding over the court with a respectful and gracious temperament and handing down honorable and fair-minded decisions. And whereas known for his approachable and friendly demeanor, Chief Justice Hines was cherished by many for his infectious smile, warm and easygoing personality, and constant displays of kindness and compassion. And whereas Chief Justice Hines will long be remembered and sorely missed by his friends, colleagues, and neighbors, and by his loving family, including his wife Helen, and two children, and four grandchildren. And whereas while we mourn the unexpected loss of a true leader who is the epitome of a gentleman, comfort can be gained in knowing how fortunate the citizens of this state are to have had such an aspiring and passionate leader. Now therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives, that the member of this body, joined together in honoring and remembering the life of honorable P. Harris Hines, express their deepest regret at his passing, and extend their most sincere condolences to his family.
Chair recognizes Chairman Welch to speak to the resolution.
Good morning. Chief Justice Hines passed away on November fourth, just a few months after he had retired from the Supreme Court of the state of Georgia. He was, he was such a pleasant man, a gentleman. He was affable, self-effacing, and genuinely cared about everyone in this state. Those attorneys that appeared before him in court were given the most respect and dignity. He was courteous to them. He understood what it meant to work as hard as a lawyer does to present a case on both sides of the issue and represent their clients before a Superior Court judge, the Court of Appeals, or the Supreme Court. And he was always respectful, both of the attorneys and the clients. He was often fond of saying that he hoped that he was always courteous and gave dignity and respect to those that came before him and before the court. Governor Deal, yesterday, quoted Socrates, which Justice Hines is always fond of quoting. Socrates said that one should hear courageously, answer wisely, and consider soberly, and then decide impartially as a judge. I think Justice Hines, along with his colleagues, do that. Justice Hines is also keen to remind everyone of the Latin saying above the court, that "The job of the judiciary is to do justice, though the heavens may fall." They certainly do that, and he certainly did that. His, some of the things he was most proud of recently was that he strove to try to build collaboration between the executive branch, or among the executive branch, the judiciary, and legislative branch. He was adamant about it, to the point that he would even call me into his office and say, self-effacingly, "What have I done wrong?" And I, I was stunned by this, the Chief Justice of the Georgia Supreme Court asking Andy Welch, a citizen, "What have I done wrong? You've done nothing wrong. You've represented the judiciary with the utmost integrity." Sometimes there's just a disagreement as to policy. But his earnest, his earnestness with respect to representing the judiciary before this body was so powerful. He was so concerned about it that he would take that much time. The other thing that was extremely important to Justice Hines, as I was reminded by the clerk of the Supreme Court, was his oath of office. He lived by that oath. It was essential to who he was and how he led the court. We mourn the loss. We pray for comfort for the family, for his wife Helen, his two children, and his four grandchildren. And the folks that are here with me today have practiced in the bar, or have served as the representative for Justice Hines and Marietta. And all of us recognize how important each branch of government is, and we, and I am grateful to you all for taking the time to honor this man and his life and his service to our state. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chairman Welch. The clerk will read the caption to a group of privileged resolutions.
Unnumbered House Resolution Honoring a Life and Memory of Officer Antoine Tony. Unnumbered House Resolution Honoring a Life and Memory of Henry Doris Tyson Senior and for other purposes. That completes the reading of the privileged resolutions.
Is there any objection to adopting the privileged resolutions? The Chair hears none, and the resolutions are adopted. I hope you will help me wish happy birthday to some members here in the body today, beginning, I guess, with the most mature of the three. Happy birthday to Chairman Butch Parrish, Chairman Parrish. A happy birthday to Representative Sandra Scott, Representative Scott. And a happy birthday to Representative Dwayne Hill, Representative Hill. All right, we have some announcements. If you have signed up for an announcement, make your way to the front of the chamber. I'm going to ask the members to give attention to the announcements. Chair recognizes the Chair of the House Appropriations Committee, Chairman England, for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No, I haven't been drinking, I just got off balance just then. But anyway, this babe just may start before it's over with, but anyway. Just a reminder, full Appropriations Committee at one o'clock, promptly at one o'clock. Please be in the room, in your seats, bring your documents from your desk. Please be in the room, in your seats, bring your documents from your desk with you today to that meeting. And we'll hear from the Governor, we'll hear from Commissioner Black, Director Homer Bryson with Jima, Commissioner Chuck Williams with Forestry, some folks from DoAS to relate some of the property damage to some of our state facilities, and may have one or two others that are coming as well to kind of give us some updates. So please be there promptly at 1:00, ready to do business. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Chairman James Beverly for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The House Democratic Caucus will meet at 11:30 for a grab-and-go lunch, but I need you all to stay there for about ten minutes. But we have lunch at 11:30 down in Room 230. So I'll see you guys at 11:30. Thanks.
Chair recognizes Chairman Werkeiser for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Because of the Appropriations Meeting at 1:00, the Industry and Labor Meeting that was scheduled at 1:00 today has moved to 3:00, CLOB 506. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Chairman Earhart for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is just a reminder, the ATL Board Elections in this House has a lot to do with that. District 2 is today at 3:00, 506 LOB. District 10 is tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. in 506 CLOB.
Chair recognizes Representative Kendrick for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, you have on your desk a flyer if you could join me for a special session of my Blacks and Tech Policy Conference. It's going to be from 2:00 to 5:00 over in 406. You're here from different innovators throughout the state, so if you can stop on by, that would be great. Thank you.
That completes our announcements. Completes... Oh, Chairman Powell forgot to sign up. You know the rule. But since it's... You've got business to do, I'm going to let you off this time. Chair recognizes Chairman Powell for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Full Ways and Means Committee will meet at 12:30, at 12:30, at 606 CLOB. Thank you.
Now, that comple... Chair recognizes Vice Chairman Harrell for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Rules Committee will meet this afternoon upon adjournment of the Appropriations Committee.
Had a busy afternoon. That now, I think, completes the announcements. Chair recognizes the Majority Leader of the House for a motion.
Mr. Speaker, I move this House stand in recess until 4:00 p.m. today, and then stand adjourned until 10:00 a.m. Thursday, November the 15th, 2018.
The Majority Leader has moved that this House will be in recess until 4:00 p.m. today, whereupon we would stand adjourned until 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, November 15th. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, this House will be in recess until 4:00 p.m.